In this call room, the members of this call room,
Councilman Perkins Dusty,
Here.
Councilwoman Questa,
Here.
Councilwoman Brode,
Here.
Councilwoman Torres, Councilwoman Gonzalez,
Here.
Councilwoman Keen,
Here.
Councilwoman Sedanion,
Here.
Councilwoman Mazza,
Here.
President Ball.
Here. I am the President. At this time, please stand clear for your respective right back in the house.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community in a strong sense of justice and fair play, curbe all we do. Above all, may we seek out your holy will. Give us the strength of the Father, regardless of all human considerations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the record of the City Council at the corporate meeting and committee notice of 2013, which was filed in the City Board's office and posted on the board when we sent it to 27 through 2012. Sent to its holders with the ownership of compliance with the provision of the public be the law of New Jersey. At this time, I have public speaking. Any resident of the taxpayer like the present City Council in and out of this conference, state your name and address, and any others, whatever. Once again, any resident, taxpayer, like the present City Council, please state your name and address, however.
Please, thank you. The name is Derek, uh, two twelve, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Cam.
I'm here, uh, because, um, right in the, right outside the Jefferson Building, the residents have been getting in and out with these tickets. Now, I've been receiving tickets one or two times, and I, whatever, I paid. However, this ticket, ticket that I received this morning, they're really bothering me because it says, um, park on the yellow line. So, and then I looked at the ticket in front of me, I was first off, I was parked on Second Street, and I wasn't parked on the yellow line, I had a picture there in my pocket, it showed you. But then it gets interesting when it says, to where to find Riverdale Place. I wasn't parked on Riverdale Place, I was parked on Second Street. And like I said, I had a picture in my pocket. And then right in the back of this ticket, it said, what do you from ten, twenty eight, yes, it just basically says, um, parking where prohibited, that's, that's the time. Well, when I was parked on Second, I had to take a place, there is no sign saying you're prohibited parking on, on Second, on Second Street. So, I have concern because we, we, we taxpayers' residents, we, we, uh, we work, we, we come home from a hard day's work, first of all, parking at the train yard. And then when we come home, we got parked almost three blocks away, and then journey back to our house. I lived over there as well, I had other people, and they were saying, and it's large, and it's, it's a shame that yet, you know, we are walking back to our house. And then at the supermarch, when we get up, we get in and made with these tickets. Now, what's interesting is, myself, my colleague, we were around a lot, the whole city. Basically, the whole city, we just got back. I was from the last also, they never wore a pair of them, is being enforced with yellow line, then having taken over. No one else was on the first floor. And then I showed you my pocket there, people have received tickets where saying parking and, and, and bus stop. They weren't parked from bus stop, so I said, I have proof right here in my pocket. I want to show, show to everyone's interested, and to believe others being. But this mustn't stop. I don't want us to call, film, call us, or whatever, it has to stop, we're taxpayers. We deserve it better. We come home from a hard day's work, we should have to get up at the supermarch, and we hit with all these tickets. Tickets that say we were parked somewhere, one street, and we were parked another. I mean, this is a surprise, this is very nice, and it basically says, yellow line. I, I said, I'm going to show you, I wasn't parked on the yellow line. Unless it's not, it's not being, it's not being enforced if you're enforcing one particular, uh, area of the city, it should be enforced throughout the whole city. You go down the first floor, you see car, you want to make it, you want to test it, you see some establishment, you don't see a reinforced one of these establishments. And it's getting, and it's, we're seeing after, and then notice is definitely, and it's not. And I, 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 uh, feel the argument that we should, we should come up, we should come up here, and if you like, to know that. Who do we, who do we speak, and why is it? Or what should I say, who does this yellow line, uh, thing, uh, was established? Because I don't know if you guys think in consideration, the, uh, the smitty increase of public check that we have. Maybe it isn't the limit, the technicality, but it needs to stop, it's the purpose ticket.
Okay, Mr. Cam, I, I'm the first to enter, and I can use the door, but we should be finished in just a second.
... They think they can go to anything about it, about the fact. They just like to go like they want to. He said, "Hey, we think that they're like, you know, very, very excited." I promise, why they are asking to give me free people, you are going to tell them what happened there, what they do to us, because we are nobody, but absolutely. Absolutely, we are good drivers, we are well done with others, we are everything, city, we are the noise, we are the blood, we are the water, we are the people, we are the value. But I don't know what to do now in the second life. I personally, I think second life is, that's why I need to be, alright? Please do something, because I'm not going to pay anything for some people wasting room in the quality of living over me. Thank you if you understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other resident of the tax payer that has seen us within another place, come forward with speech, and any, any address for a written piece, man?
Hello, my name is Maria, I'm sure Maria should have been someone else.
Maria, can you just pull that mic down a little bit for you? There you go.
That better?
That's better.
There you go, okay. Um, my understanding is that the Elizabeth Board of Education have extended their, um, extended themselves to the bylaws to, to work with them. Um, I know that there are two hundred kids with autism that are classified in the Elizabeth Board of Education. It is autism awareness month, I think that we should have a lot of programs, and just this for autism. Um, we really need a lot, I know Truance actually doesn't know how to deal with autism in this hospital Elizabeth, and with two hundred kids, Elizabeth be classified with autism, I think they should, you know, have autism, you know, specialists in there. Um, let's see. Uh, there's so much we need a lot for autism. Um, we need recreational things for them, we need, um, we need a lot more pools in Elizabeth. I know when I grew, when I grew up, we had a Rockers Pool, we had a Rangers Pool, there was Gaddy Street Pool outside, and we have a way to do it. You know, I think we need a lot more pools, maybe, you know, maybe do something about that, you know, maybe in a couple of years, there's more pools out there in Elizabeth. And, um, and actually maybe next year, or, you know, coming here, because we will walk or, or, or do autism, or, in, in a month or a week, you know? That'll be good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other resident, president of the tax payer that has seen us in the matter, please step forward, state your name, and address for a written piece.
My name is Paul, I'm from the power of, uh, eleven one thirty seven West Jersey Street, here Elizabeth. For one, I'm very interested in finding out why our high school children are learning about our history. So I tend to gain temporary access to Elizabeth High School's protect book, a method of course stolen away. As you are assistant and resident of Elizabeth, I think I have the right to know what children are learning in that school. After all, anything done by them will affect society in coming years. So I got a old gal who didn't have a book for her academy, they only, they didn't let me borrow a book there, so they told me to go to the Board of Education. I told them, they told me I was looking to be a book librarian for textbook. Well, they had none. So I got a book for education back, as well, to assist super junior schools, and he told me to get someone, that, so before I could pick up a book. I never heard from my whole twice. Now, because both were sharing what I teach, and they shared the teaching. So I wanted to ask the city guys to take it out, and to my question, I wanted the textbook, temporary examination.
City, okay. City, you have a petition for a share with us, you have a petition for autism.
What is that?
You have a thing, you want to share with us, or then you give me?
Sheet?
You have, you should do it so.
No, no, it is a picture I know, it's okay.
Alright, we will, we will look into it, we will investigate, okay?
Okay, tell them, tell them you have a quarter of education, you're getting a pool. I believe that I want to form an order. Thank you.
Any other resident of the tax payer that has seen us in the matter, please step forward, state your name, and address for a written piece. Once again, any resident of the tax payer that has seen us in the matter, please step forward, see you on, close your position, you are before. I, um, I want to discuss a couple of things. In regards to Mr. Carey, uh, Mr. Carey, uh, I understand you may have taken some pictures with your cameras, uh, that's correct, right, you do. Uh, and I urge you to, uh, uh, be liberal with that, uh, reduce that, I would, I'd tell you what to do, but since you're taking pictures of that corner that you can receive the service, uh, you can protest that, take it, you know, the state court, and, uh, you know, and, uh, show your camera your picture, uh, to the judge, and, uh, and, uh, and see what happens. Uh, but that is a recent ordinance in the city of Elizabeth. Uh, in, in Park on the L Line, uh, from the crosswalk, uh, it's twenty-five feet. Uh, from the stop sign, it's fifty feet. Uh, and from the bus stop, I think it's like a point or two. So it's a big variation there, uh, on, from the corner, the crosswalk, and the bus stop, and the stop sign. So I'll urge you, if you feel like you, within your right, and, and call the way you're saying, just maybe, I saw you observe, maybe we're showing you, uh, that corner, that's where the video, uh, I came as far as I should be, I'm pretty sure it is, uh, being forced by the whole city, I don't think it just targeting just the first floor. Uh, I'm pretty sure they, I, I knew that was how, I was, uh, uh, Roman, uh, just, just standing was, and I, I noticed that, I saw the bikes when they take part to the city corner. So there, there are even a ticket by the whole city, that not just targeting just the first floor. Uh, but you're on the right track with that, uh, with that camera. Uh, now, uh, uh, whether it's the old, uh, yellow line there, or fresh yellow line, it's still, you know, within the line. Uh, so just be aware of the distance, because it is the law, okay? Uh, so, I know you say you got one of them things, you ever got a ticket, I'll be on the place?
Yes, they go to a river, those prices from the second street.
I said, so, that being, that's country, so, you can, you can protest that also. So you got a couple of legal there, and I was observing that, you're waiting, okay? Uh, and the other thing is, uh, this just with, with regards to the, the taxi, uh, we have a license bureau here, uh, take that to place of the license bureau, uh, what you just described about, uh, leaving some kind of dispatch, uh, take that to the license, license bureau, let them know that, uh, was taking place over in the Galloway Court, uh, and we understand you said you may have, uh, fare, uh, in the two passenger. Uh, take that to the license bureau, and I'm pretty sure, uh, some of those expecting in there, uh, will help you. Uh, and, uh, Maria, she spoke about autism, I, I believe in a helpful fact, uh, we worked very hard, we have some council trying to work with, uh, with the autism being within here around this state, matter of fact, and Councilwoman Law, she's been diligently working hard, I believe she had, uh, that, that, helped, uh, help me there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
What?
Uh, August, I mean, April.
Thank you.
Right, not only that, um, I'm working with the health director and, um, mayor's office. On Tuesday, um, April thirtieth, Tuesday, next Tuesday, we're going to have a little celebration for, um, children who have been diagnosed with autism, or, or on the autism spectrum. We're gonna have a little pizza party right here, right in the mayor's office on the second floor, just to, um, recognize and congratulate those children who have received, um, special awards, um, while they're at school during their school year, sometimes they get special awards for art, or music, or even academics. So if you know anyone, um, anyone in the listening audience, if you have children or know children who are on the autism, um, spectrum, or who have been diagnosed with autism, um, please call the health department at eight two zero four oh five, so you can register your child, to bring them up on next Tuesday, on April thirtieth, to receive special recognition from the mayor, um, the health director, myself.
What, what time is that?
It's from four to six.
What time eight was?
From four to six.
Thank you, Maria, I hope you, that, I hope you picked up that information that the councilwoman just addressed, so, um, uh, I hope you've grown, uh, the greatness of a quarter. Uh, Councilwoman?
Mr. President, uh, just to let Mrs. Cherya know, I am the advisor to the Club of Elizabeth High School, and right now we're raising money, we have a press for awareness for autism, uh, we're signing a dollar each, we find that it's such a goal, that we're trying to do fundraising also to, that the students and the people are committed to be aware of autism, and so that we can come up with a solution to the problem, we're raising money for a dress on day, we have, has permission to the board to give us, uh, any kid that wear a uniform, and then it is, if we get the approval, we're gonna allow them not to wear a uniform, but they're gonna pay not to wear a uniform. The money goes to benefits for autism, okay? So that's what we do at Elizabeth High School, we like charities, a lot of the key clubs on race for autism awareness.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Councilwoman. Uh, and we go to the gentleman's book about Board of Education, about, uh, seeing phone calls, uh, we cannot make them insurance phone calls, I give them, ask them to do so. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Jerry accepted his body, uh, and I know it's about textbooks, uh, but he got to go there and keep assisting, uh, and make sure that you're being assisted by what he wanted, which he asked me for there, and you know, there, it, it knows, I'll just go one time, go several times, and hopefully, eventually you'll bring that, that error. Uh, I hope, I hope you answer the questions that you, uh, you had for us, but if you need more information, please, do not hesitate to stay around, and see either one of us who have, we have discussed that, until, let me go in detail. Thank you. Uh, just come over here.
Oh, Mr. President. Mr. President.
Uh, sorry, question.
If I could.
Uh, can I ask, can I ask?
I want to make comments, well, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, with respect to the gentleman with the licensing issue, Mr. President, uh, we have, before, sir, I have a letter from, from a camp committee, who's claiming that there are diseases going on in the passengers. So I'd like to see if you can forward this to the licensing department, apparently, they've already been to licensing department, and claim that they've got no results from it, so I'd like to see if you can forward this as well as the gentleman's, that way, to look into it, and get back to us in terms of both these things, if you could, Mr. President.
Yeah, very well, we'll do that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just one thing, I, I have my, 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 probably here, probably, probably here, sorry.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-eight, authorize amendment to chapter ten point eight, what canon code of the city of Elizabeth entitled stop intersections designated, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of the Gate Avenue Springfield Road with advanced warning signals in each direction.
You have the report number forty-three sixty-eight, anyone here like the rest of the number forty-three sixty-eight? But again, you have the report number forty-three sixty-eight, anyone who, who might request me, uh, speak on all the number forty-three sixty-eight, same on.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-nine, amend chapter ten point six point twenty, code of the city of Elizabeth entitled designation meter zones and hours of parking, specifically to amend locations and hours.
You have the report number forty-three sixty-nine, anyone here like the rest of the number forty-three sixty-nine? Once again, you have the report number forty-three sixty-nine, anyone here like the rest of the number forty-three sixty-nine, same on. If you accept my calling, if I were to spend, if you have to, you know, communication, and both of city council, city courts, and we want to, what is our first reading?
Ordinance number forty-three seventy, amend ordinance number seventy forty-seven, entitled to ordinance to establish certain classified and unclassified positions in the city's table organization, and to set the annual compensation for said positions to be paid from April first nineteen eighty-four, except as otherwise provided, as provided by the municipal budget to be paid as other employees are paid, and as provided on attached schedule.
You have the report number forty-three seventy, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Ordinance number forty-three seventy-two, amend chapter two point fifty-six, section one ten of the city of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the table organization, fire department, fire personnel is provided on attached schedule.
You have the report number forty-three seventy-one, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Ordinance number forty-three seventy-two, amend chapter two point fifty-six, section one ten of the city of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the table organization of the police department, police personnel is provided, and on attached schedule.
You have the report number forty-three seventy-two, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Yes, Councilman Masz?
Uh, just for a, uh, my own knowledge, this position that we're dealing in, they already been filled, or we planning to fill those positions?
Schedule, right? Schedule. I don't know if you explain, what's your, what's your, what's your situation? I, I believe this is, it's just a few organizations, it's scheduled, uh, uh, Council, but if there's any more, would it be, it's Council?
Uh, as long as I get the answer, I'm probably, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Ordinance number forty-three seventy-three, amend chapter seventeen, and code of the city of Elizabeth entitled land development, specifically section seventeen point thirty-six point twenty C, for the elements conditions, seventeen point thirty-six point thirty B, temporary track bottles, seventeen point thirty-six ninety, not performance, seventeen point thirty-six point one hundred block dimensions, seventeen point thirty-six point one ten yard dimensions, seventeen point thirty-six one sixty C, minimum square footage for commercial space, seventeen point thirty-six one sixty C, and seventeen point forty-eight point eighty D signs.
You have the report number forty-three seventy-three, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Help me here, I have a question, I wish people go on, but it should take place in the city council, to be held at two forty point thirteen, at seven thirty of, what is our final question?
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-eight, authorize amendment to chapter ten point eight point ten, and code of the city of Elizabeth entitled stop intersections designated, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of the Gate Avenue Springfield Road, with advanced warning signals in each direction.
You have the report number forty-three sixty-eight, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-nine, amend chapter ten point thirty-six point twenty, and code of the city of Elizabeth entitled designation meter zones and hours of parking, specifically to amend locations and hours.
You have the report number forty-three sixty-nine, what is your pleasure?
Will the ordinance be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Still business?
Authorize amendment to the cash management plan of the city of Elizabeth for the period January one, two thousand thirteen, thirty-seven thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, adopted January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, specifically to include section five designation of officials authorized to sign checks. Confirming of this Denise George Campbell of Elizabeth to serve as a member of the Elizabeth House of Authority to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Barbara Shannon. Adopt a resolution in support of Senate Bill S eighteen ninety-six, Assembly Bill A fifteen oh three, sharing burden property assessment appeal refunds. Permit the purchasing agent to advertise for proprietary sealed bids with Elizabeth Police Department specification to purchase mil W R C rifles. Authorize award contract to Flemington Ford Flemington, New Jersey, for the purchase of vehicle parts and repairs for various departments under the Somerset County Co-op for the period April nine, two thousand thirteen, through April nine, two thousand fourteen, in an amount not exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the property officials, purchasing agent, to commence with the competitive contracting process to draft a request or proposal for selecting an energy services company to initiate an energy savings improvement plan. Authorize award contract to Garnet State Highway Products, Products, buying in New Jersey for the purchase of a blue side plants for the Department of Public Works, for the period April eleven, two thousand thirteen, through April thirty, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Authorize award contract to W Mason Companies, Focus, New Jersey, for the purchase of office supplies under the Somerset County Co-op for the period April twelve, two thousand thirteen, through January twenty-four, two thousand fourteen, in an amount not exceeding one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Permit the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements with propertymove.com to auction impounded property in the possession of Elizabeth Police Department. Amend the resolution adopted March twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, authorizing the award of contract to school's emergency lighting, for the purchase of emergency lighting and installation for the police department, specifically to add a state contract eight one three three six. Authorize the planning board to review the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, model flood damage prevention ordinance, and provide recommendations for the valley.
You have the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolutions be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold? Rescind the resolution adopted March twelve, two thousand fifteen, to provide an owner occupied basic deferred payment loan to the owner of the property located at seven six three Thomas Street, in an amount not exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Amend the resolution adopted October twelve, two thousand twelve, authorize an agreement with Rutgers Cooperative Expansion four H program, to provide funds in the amount of five thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars, ten cents, specifically to extend the term of the contract to August thirty first, two thousand thirteen. Amend the resolution adopted November twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, to provide an owner occupied basic deferred payment loan to the owner of the property located at four six one four seven five, Catherine Street, Unit one oh six B, specifically to adjust the affordability period to ten years. Amend the resolution adopted May twenty-second, two thousand twelve, awarding the contract to Brownell Elizabethine for the planter certification program, specifically to extend the term of the contract to December first, two thousand thirteen. Establish leas for the boarding of properties listed on Schedule A on file in the city clerk's office, in the total amount of two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars, ninety-two cents. Establish leas for the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on Schedule A on file in the city clerk's office, in the total amount of two thousand one hundred eleven dollars, ninety-eight cents. Authorize the property officials' tenure to an agreement with URS for Mean Sanchez Industrial Design Inc., in conjunction with the United States Armed Corps of Engineers, New York District, for the installation of a temporary noise monitor at the Elizabeth Marina, seventy-one Front Street, to measure sound levels generated by dredging activities in the Yonah Kill for a two-year period, at no cost to the city, with payment to the city of twenty-five dollars per month, to cover the cost of electricity. Establish handicap parking spaces in front of premises located at two twelve Clark Place and five fifty-six Marshall Street. Authorize settlement in workers' compensation litigation matter of Porges versus City of Elizabeth, in the total amount of forty-one thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars. Authorize settlement in workers' compensation litigation matter of Green versus City of Elizabeth, in the total amount of fourteen thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars, eighty-eight cents. Authorize settlement in workers' compensation litigation matter of Mattos versus City of Elizabeth, in the total amount of thirteen thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. Paying tolly bills approved bingo, in amount of one hundred and sixty.
You have the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolutions be upheld, Mr. President?
Move then secondly, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Rova?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sdenia?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Gold?
Aye, my eyes, what is your question?
Accommodation, Mike Seaman, I'm a, for you, Edward Burke, Ted Exanis, Seth Head, uh, Griffin, Michael Wood, uh, Ryan Humblewood, Shane Edin, Eagle Scout Award, Boy Scout troop for the week, David G. Bell, Eagle Scout Award, Boy Scout troop, well aware, and Michael Mazeroski, retired chief housing inspector, Richard Ling, retired housing inspector, you on accommodation?
Yes, one, Mr. President.
Thank you.
One for, um, Mr. Barbara Shannon, serving on the housing authority for us. Thank you.
Any other accommodation? Memorial, Clara Cecil Jones, Alicia Redfield, iconic, former teacher, board of administration, third, Israel Cameron, Elizabeth, five son, in order, pardon, tax office, head of, vivid, Autobahn, in, 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 in,